Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan is here. Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Vicente.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards. We want to recognize Mrs. Tammy Houck, Principal of Brookpoint High School, for presentation of awards. (applause) Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. Please join me in congratulating the Brookpoint High School HOSA students who attended the 38th Virginia HOSA State Leadership Conference. HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, now known as Future Health Professionals, is a national career and technical student organization endorsed by the United States Department of Education. HOSA is composed of middle school, secondary, and post-secondary collegiate students along with professional alumni and honorary members. It is the largest student organization which prepares students to enter the healthcare field, and they did an outstanding job. HOSA students, please join me up front. Fabiola Assentia Callis, Delaney Bertall, Colleen Brown, Naeja Harris, Amaya Reynolds, Emily Watala, and their sponsor, Susan Betas. Brookpoint HOSA has earned the distinction of Outstanding HOSA Chapter in the state for the 14th consecutive year. We had three HOSA state officers that helped run the opening sessions and the workshops, and their efforts helped to make the entire conference a success. There were more than 900 competitors from HOSA chapters around the state. And here are the awards that these Blackhawks earned from their competitions. Colleen Brown was selected as the Outstanding Chapter Officer for 2016-17. First place in HOSA Happenings Newsletter was Fabiola Assentia Callis, our newsletter editor. First place in Clinical Specialty was Fabiola Assentia Callis. Third place in Medical Law and Ethics Knowledge Test was Naeja Harris. Fifth place in Medical Law and Ethics Knowledge Test was Delaney Bertall. First place Extemporaneous Writing was Amaya Reynolds. And second place Extemporaneous Writing was Delaney Bertall. In team events, first place Health Education Team was Colleen Brown, Angelise Cardona, Naeja Harris, and Fabiola Assentia Callis. First place in Medical Reserve Corps Partnership was Colleen Brown, Naeja Harris, and Emily Watala. In addition, the following students were elected to serve as Virginia HOSA state officers on the HOSA Executive Board for the 2018-2019 school year. Colleen Brown was elected HOSA State Vice President, and Amaya Reynolds was elected HOSA State Secretary. Also, students placing first through third place are now eligible to compete at the HOSA International Leadership Conference in June. Good luck, and thank you to these inspiring Blackhawks.[277.63][277.63](applause) Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations.[281.13][281.13](applause) Thank you. We'd next like to recognize Ms. Cherie Johnson, Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. It is my pleasure to recognize the 2017-2018 Photography and Television Interns. These are the students who work in our television production and photography programs with Stafford County Public Schools. Each week, the students provide service that allows thousands of people to view our school board meetings and other events in the division. Their knowledge, professionalism, and expertise allows SCPS to keep the community and parents informed. The SCPS educational channel airs news and information about the division 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Students helped to produce over 125 hours of television this year, and 100 of those hours included live broadcasts. The photography students took pictures at the three listening tours, the Falmouth 50th Anniversary Celebration, and the Alternative Education Open House, just to name a few. Tonight, we would like to say thank you for the dedication and service to the students and their teachers, Mr. Bill Leep and Ms. Linda Arnie. Students, please come forward as I call your name to receive your certificates. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. We'll start with the photography students. Hunter Hedrick, Grace Fuller, Samantha Garcia, and Ms. Linda Arnie.[398.03][398.03](applause) Thank you. And now, we move on to our television interns. Amber Brown, Isaac Burzl, Nathan Freitz, Joseph Kennedy, Jalen Livett, Rachel McDonald, Michael Smith, Joseph Staley, and Mr. Bill Leep.[470.03][470.03](applause) I'd like to say thank you to all of the students, photography and television. We couldn't do what we do in the Communications Department. There's so many events going on, and these students, they're so professional, and they just do a great job. Their work is awesome. So, the communication team thanks you, the division thanks you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.[494.31][494.31](applause)
All right. That brings us to an award recognition for North Stafford High School library renovation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members, Dr. Benson. Before I read some of the information about this fantastic award, I'd like to invite some folks down to come. I'd like to invite Mrs. Young and Ms. Healy, if both of you could come forward, as having a large amount of students there at North Stafford.
How about Mrs. Decatur?
Okay, that'd be great. Fantastic. And if I could have Jennifer Spindl, Karen Duffy, Kyle Hopkins from Stantec Architects, and Tom Nichols representing the high schools. Dan Horneck is not with us today. He's at some training this evening. So, if all of you guys could please come forward. On April 17th, 2018, at the Virginia Association for Learning Environments, A4LE Conference, the Renovate Library North Stafford High School project received one of three 2018 Best Design Awards. The project was evaluated by three nationally recognized industry-specific professionals who used the following criteria to score the nominated projects: community, learning, physical environment, planning process, program response, innovative elements, spatial organization, technology integration, design efficiency, and expansion capability. Judges commented, included, loved the variety of spaces, both to work individually and collaboratively, and this library, unlike most, holds its own against the Internet. It presents a visually stunning and inclusive opportunity for learners to collaborate and explore independently. And I would be remiss to say that there were many, many team members that participated in making this library space a phenomenal space. I first want to say thank you to Stantec Architects for doing such a fantastic job designing this space, and listening to the students, the staff at the high school, as well as here at Central Office. You guys listened well, and you executed superbly. So, thank you very much. I want to recognize Jennifer Spindl and Karen Duffy for their just Herculean effort at really just putting everything in their ounce of, you know, flesh and blood in doing these projects. And it's just incredibly to see how much they, the passion, and how much they care for these things. And obviously, the staff at North Stafford, the library staff, the administration, they were fantastic to work with. So, the end result was just a fabulous, state-of-the-art, 21st-century library space that is now being used three times, four times more than it had in the past. It's touching every student in the school. Students want to be there, they want to hang out, they want to learn in that space, which is what it's all about. It's incredible. So, on behalf of A4LE, this design award is something very special, and I think all of you should be very proud. So, thank you.[747.38][747.38](applause) Everybody together?
Mr. Haran?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to add one more person to that list, and that would be Dr. Benson.
Oh, absolutely.
I think he had a vision, seeing how wonderful the library at Brookpoint turned out, and I think he was a major force in helping to get this through, and particularly finding the funding and everything else. And of course, yourself.
I agree. No, I agree. Dr. Benson, come on down. And we have the librarian from North Stafford here. Didn't realize she was here.
Yeah.
So, we certainly want to bring her down.[784.44][784.44](applause) Come on, all in the family. Come on down here.
Scott?
No, no, it's all good.
Okay. All right. Everybody look.
The only ones who made it out.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. That brings us to special presentations by Hazard, Young, and the associates on the superintendent's search. And for the record, I want to state that the Hazard, whoever he is in this organization, is no kin to our Ms. Hazard.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Or Ms. Young. That's right.
That's right. Isn't that? Match?
Yes.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
Well, I'm so glad to be back. I had a wonderful week in Stafford a couple weeks ago, and I want to start by thanking all of you for being flexible with me when I had some personal issues to deal with the first week I was supposed to be here, and making me feel so welcome and giving me the time that you did. I'd also like to especially recognize Cherie Johnson and her staff for helping me with community outreach, and making certain that there were translators available in every community meeting, and that everything I needed was available to me. And Missy Hall, who was tireless in doing and redoing schedules, making sure that I was taken care of, and that we really had a meaningful process at this point in our search. So, on behalf of myself and my partner Brad Drager, that you know, we feel like we've had a good beginning to this process, and we're very happy to be sharing the results of our meetings in open forums, and focus groups, and individual interviews with you this evening. I want to talk about what I'm going to do, and then do it. You have several documents. One is a long text that is a narrative that summarizes the notes that we took in the groups that we interviewed, either individually or in groups. And that text will be the sort of the outline of what I'll be talking about tonight. I'll speak from, and you also will have in front of you, or you should have in front of you, what is on the screen, and that will be the PowerPoint that is basically derived from that text. If you've looked at the text, and I encourage you to, you will see many, many pages of verbatim notes. We do that to make certain that you really hear what your constituents said to us, what you said to us, so that you, again, can look and have the sense of what this input was, and how people are feeling about the system and the process at this point. Brad will go over with you the results of the online survey. That is a separate report. I'll refer to it a little bit in my remarks. Those two reports, we usually, what happens, and we saw in this case that there's correlation between the two, so we feel like we have some results that have credence that you, we can share with you this evening. So, let's begin. Survey participants. You can see here a chart that lists the numbers of people in each constituency group that you identified that participated. We were disappointed in the numbers of people in the first column. We had hoped for more participation, and I think there was a valiant effort to get the word out. However, and I did do some comparison to 2013, when this was done previously, this was a better representation in terms of balance among groups than there was previously. The group that fell in numbers in any significant amount was administrators. All other groups were either the same, or very close to the same, or more. We are very pleased with the results, the participation in the online survey. That is a very good sample, and you can see the numbers there, especially for teachers and support staff, and parents. These are key constituency groups, and obviously, you had good participation from those groups. And we're always happy to see students sharing their thoughts and feelings about their schools. I will point out as well that in individual interviews, you all were interviewed individually, as you know. Also talked to Dr. Benson and to the county administrator, Mr. Foley, individually. Okay. Consistently reported themes. These are the things that we heard repeatedly after going through our notes, reflecting on what we heard, sort of do an analysis, as you can see from our notes, of what was repeated through each consistency, through each constituency group. And this is what we heard about Stafford County Public Schools. First of all, the strengths. Stafford County Public Schools, Stafford County is a community that really values and supports its schools. This is not a community that in any way is giving up on the public schools. People are moving here to put their children here. They're moving here because of the schools. There's a high degree of satisfaction overall for the schools in this region, and I cannot overemphasize how positive that is. I want to point out that in every group, or just about every group, there was much discussion of Dr. Benson's tenure here, and overall, it's been perceived as strong and positive. It's brought innovation and needed change in both instruction and operations, and increased visibility. I think Dr. Benson has taught in many classrooms. I understand he's played the banjo, guitar?
Close enough.
Whatever. Close enough. That he has reached out to many people in the community and in schools, and that has been noticed and appreciated. He has extended outreach by forming some advisory committees that have been much appreciated, and according to the people participating in them, much needed. Facilities are overall in good shape. I didn't have a chance to visit but I think three schools, and I've been in a lot of schools, and I was impressed with the quality of the facilities overall. I know there's some outliers. I know the last school that we visited out in the southern part of the district is in need of work, but overall, there's recognition that these facilities are in good shape. Stafford County itself is a location that is unique. It is, it has a real rural flavor, certainly, but also has many attributes of a more urban and suburban environment. And so, again, it has a unique kind of diversity, and people are proud of that, and people are aware that it's special. And then finally, the reputation of the schools. Over and over and over again, we were told about the dedicated, exceptional teachers and administrators working in these schools, and the academic performance of students. I think after my first day, and I think I had 10 different groups, and even though they were talking about problems, because we asked them to, I would say to people who identified themselves either as alums, or parents, or in some cases, grandparents, "So, tell me about your own experience, or your child's experience." And to a person, even people who came out to describe a problem, they said, "My child got what he or she needed." And that's pretty astounding. There are issues. I don't want to say that there aren't. Matter of fact, I'm saying to a person. I remember one person who said that she was not happy with some issues in special education, but otherwise, to a person, I heard that these schools are exceptional, and that children are well-served in them, even though there are some issues to deal with, some challenges. Okay, so let's talk about challenges. These, again, are in alphabetical order. They're not in an order of importance, but even in alphabetical order, I don't think you would, you would probably put pretty much up there at the top, budget issues, compensation, reasonable class size, and resources for programs. And something that came up repeatedly was poorly sourced programs for the growing number of English as a Second Language students, a description of programs where children are not being served as others are, and where teachers do not feel that they have the resources that they need. The other side of the coin with deep appreciation for Dr. Benson's tenure is stress and anxiety about him leaving. There is real fear that progress will not continue. There's a fear that after some changes that people have supported and felt good about, that there's a possibility that the system may take steps backwards, that people will not want to buy into new leadership. So, there is real anxiety about a change in leadership. Bullet number three, diversity, equity, and parity issues that impact minority students and their families, as well as perceptions that the demands of more affluent members of the community prevail over the needs of others. We noted that these kinds of concerns did not arise in the last leadership profile report, or were not reported in that document. And I think that's due to two factors. Number one, who we asked. I think we, to Dr. Benson's credit, he has included more diversity in the outreach efforts that he has made, and we invited some of the people who were involved in those outreach efforts to talk with us, and they came out, and they wanted to talk with us. I don't believe that these issues are new. I just don't think that we had asked that constituency before what they thought. Secondly, I don't know what happened in your last boundary adjustment process, but the stories that I was told was that there were some very divisive comments made, perhaps from this very location, about schools. And that translates into children in schools. When you sit down with a group of kids, and the first thing they tell you is that, "You know, we go to the ghetto school," and then they say, "And you know, we know what that means," they're telling me a lot. And they heard those comments. And I think that, again, brought to the fore that there is a perception that some schools, and therefore, some children, some young people, are valued more than others. And that is something I know that you would want to attend to. It may, in fact, be part and parcel of the same thing, but I kept hearing about the north versus the south. Stafford, not that there was a divide, that may or may not, I don't know what lines those mean, and I don't exactly know, but that was, again, a perception that there are places in this county that are more valued than other places. And that is, I know, of concern to you. Next issue, growth capacity issues overcrowding, and that combines with inadequate funding. I want to point out to you that when we did the search for Dr. Benson, issues around pay, and budget, and growth, and crowding, and facilities were hot buttons then. There has been progress made, obviously, on the compensation front and others under his leadership, and from what I've just understood, and that there have been a number of building projects as well in the last four years. However, these problems are not going away, and I think at this point, what I kept hearing was, there's no sense that there has been a long-range plan, and that there is really an acceptance that this system is going to need more resources in terms of operations and buildings, and to pay for teachers and quality staff. And so, growth and capacity issues and overcrowding are creating a sense of anxiety among your constituency groups. And related to that, the relationship between the school board and Board of Supervisors is not inspiring confidence and trust that these problems can be solved. The problems are serious, they're not unique. Lots of school districts deal with funding issues, and facilities issues, and growth issues. What is somewhat unique is right now, at this moment, that there's not a deep sense of trust and faith that the political bodies in Stafford will work together to solve these problems. And then lastly, but of course not lastly, is teacher retention and shortages that are impacting and have the potential to seriously impact the quality of instruction. Again, while I got, and Brad as well, heard very many positive things about the quality of the schools, there's also a recognition that that is dependent upon the people who work in them. And getting and retaining that quality of people takes resources, and there's, again, a concern that you're well aware of, that this county cannot adequately compete with the northern divisions, and attract and maintain teachers and other critical people, critical to the mission of the schools. Going along with these two pieces are what are the desired characteristics that we heard again and again, that I think extend logically from the strengths and from the challenges. One is a broad base of experience. You want it all, you need it all. Although, there was not a lot of concern, specific concern expressed about the instructional program, there is a recognition that this didn't happen accidentally, that strong instructional leadership from the superintendent level has set things in the right direction over time, and that you've had the right people in place over time. So, there is a concern that, and a desire to maintain, and improve, of course, but at least maintain, the level of, the quality level of instruction that you've been able to provide. But there also is a recognition that a knowledge of budget process, facilities, and other operational areas is necessary as well. Second is a commitment to Stafford County, and an intention to stay for a long tenure to make lasting changes. This was an issue the last time around, and it's more of an issue or the same. I'd say the intensity is probably a little higher for obvious reasons at this point. I will say this, and I put it, we put it in our report, that there's great division. There are people who told us emphatically that the only way to get commitment was to hire from within, and there were an equal number of people who told us emphatically that the experience-based base required for a job of this complexity could not be done by somebody from within. We intend to bring you a broad range of candidates, and we will be looking at people from within and outside the system. But we just want you to know that that's what we heard, and that's an issue for you to consider. We need someone who is a strong communicator and has collaboration skills to build the relationships that you need to be a good and functioning organization. This is a relatively large school district, but you pride yourself on having a family atmosphere. You love being a small town amid all these other larger areas, and that feeling has been... been nurtured by communication and collaboration. Dr. Benson is a data-driven decision-maker. That's what I've heard about him time and again. I know he has a science background, so he thinks in terms of proof and logic, and it has been much admired, largely because your constituency groups recognize that it made him a credible advocate for the district, that he didn't just talk in loose terms about needs, he made the case, and he made the case with data. And they recognize that that's important and that's persuasive. And going along with that, the political skills to facilitate cooperation between the two boards, to get what's necessary to meet the fiscal and operational needs of the school. Sensitivity to and experience with issues of diversity, equity, and parity. Again, these are issues that are critical to the health of all public schools, and I think your schools are no different. And I also believe if you look deeper in some of this data, some of the student comments, I think you need to pay attention to that and make certain that there is someone who is here, who will make certain that the quality of these schools is for all. Strategic. Experienced enough to recognize what needs to be enhanced and maintained rather than starting over, and will build on existing strengths. I think again, someone who comes in and has a vision and can speak about what's most important, and is not going to be Dr. Benson and is not expected to be Dr. Benson, but also will recognize those things that have been put in place and are doing well, and reassure this community that you don't have to start everything over again to go forward. And then lastly, visible, has an approachable leadership style that fosters unity and promotes trust and openness, probably some, two of the most important qualities in a leader, is someone you can trust and approach. Questions about that portion of the report? Comments or questions before Brad talks about the surveys? Okay.
I know we stand between you and the rest of your agenda, so we'll keep moving. This slide you've actually seen before, but I want to emphasize that the parents and teachers make up almost 80% of the online survey, which again, I think is very, very important. The next slide, and by the way, your participation is several hundred, if not maybe three or 400 over where it was last time, so you really had a great turnout on this online survey. And I see this survey from all types of districts across the nation, we use the same survey. And I know technology, following statements were received to be district strengths, I know technology was not your top one last time, so that is a dramatic improvement that that has come up. TL stands for teaching and learning. District schools are safe. I can't say enough that how important that is in this day and age, that that has come up as number two as one of your strengths. There's a lot of parents in districts that don't have that type of feeling, so you should be commended for that. And I know it's a hard thing to maintain and to maintain the safety, but boy, that's a nice one to have as number two. The personalization of instructional strategies, again, this is wonderful that in your top three, recognized by everybody who took this survey, are teaching and learning. That doesn't happen in many districts. District employees, effective teachers, administrators, and support, that goes right in hand in hand with what Ann heard from everybody about the praise for administrators and teachers and support staff. And high student, high standards for student performance. A lot of times we go in districts and that is not the case. In fact, that one rarely shows up in these top five, so again, credo to you. And actually, you're going to see that come back because the students were some of the ones who pushed that percentage up, that's very nice. Fifty-six students took this online survey, which is way up from the last time. What the online survey told us about characteristics sought, again, maintaining, recruiting, developing, employing, your best teaching force, that's management, foster the professional climate of trust and respect amongst faculty and staff, community engagement, effective planning and management, long-term financial health, obviously sometimes that's number one on many of these, and transparent communication and establish a culture of high expectations for all students. This is hard to see, I'm sure the board can see it better in a written report. And let me pause here and say that Ann's 43 pages that she spoke of from the textual report, the PowerPoint, and this survey will be available on the website for anybody who can't read the numbers tonight, and it'll be available for everybody to go into. We also encourage our applicants to go on and read all this too. But I wanted to highlight that in the overall district, you got a 55% quality of education approval rating there, but look at the administrators at 79, community at 40, parents of students attending schools were 52, support employees 55, teachers 57. Students were the lowest, and I found that a little bit interesting, that overall quality of education was only 34% amongst the students. Then you see these other categories, vision and values, and I'll only point out how high technology is again under teaching and learning, the last one there, 76% overall. In fact, students had that ranked as their number one at 81%. District schools are safe, students had, I mean, teachers had it 81%, I'm sorry, students had it at 83%. And you can also look at the schools are safe, and the personalized and instructional strategies to address individual learning needs is very high too. Again, these are wonderful numbers, this is a lot to build on. This is not a school district that needs revamping or a new direction, this is work on what you're doing well and do it even better. This is an interesting slide because the group's the top four for each group, and we sometimes see these tightly clustered, sometimes we see these scattered all over the place. It usually says a district's working very well when they're tightly clustered, and these are tightly clustered. So again, that recruited employees in the top for almost everybody, and the only one that really differs on all this is students. And this goes to what Ann was saying. Down under there, it says, demonstrated deep understanding of educational research and emerging best practices. It's interesting that the students picked out as number two. And then their number three was understand and be sensitive to the needs of a diverse student population. I thought that was a fascinating thing that the students picked that one out and made that one of their clusters of four, and even a clear compelling vision for the future. I know it's 16, I didn't always have that, maybe the students are looking for that too. But the others, support employees, teachers, parents, community members, administrators, that's a tight cluster up there, and there's wide agreement on that. I'm sorry, did I skip? No. This is a profile analysis, I'm not going to go through this in depth. It pretty much restates what a lot has been said before. Again, recruiting and employing, that's how I got to number one because so many people said it, but you can see the individual differences. Same thing with, well, I didn't put the other one on, there's another appendix in your report. So, let me pause, I talk fast. I talk faster than Ann, I'm from New Jersey, she's from Virginia. Although I spent 35 years in Virginia, you'd think I'd slow down at some point. But let me say where we are in the search process. We, on June 12th, plan to present the board a slate of candidates. We need some time in executive session, as we've been talking about to do that. We'll also talk about the interview process. I know Ms. Hall's working with you on dates, very, very important, because starting tomorrow, I have interviews scheduled, Ann has interviews scheduled, and we do that for the next two or three weeks where we are screening, recruiting, and we wanted this report to become final before we started that. But one of the things we do in those interviews is tell the people the timeline, especially the people we really think are going to be high flyers, they are informed of the timeline so that like on June 12th, if we decide, if the board decides who you want to interview, we can get those people back in for the interview. So this is very, very important that you work with Ms. Hall on that and get that out. We are encouraged, we probably have a list of about 30 people who have started to fill out applications and we're pursuing them in different modalities. They're from Virginia, they're from across the nation. We also have probably another list of 15 to 20 that we're trying to recruit in. We've had some very good success with that. People who don't know they want to work in Stafford, we're chasing them too, because they might be a great superintendent for you. And so we're very enthused. In fact, actually, I think at this point, the pool is very robust and very rich, and I think you're going to have some hard choices. The best thing I can ever do with any board is have you say at the end of me, "That was really hard, we don't know who to pick." I mean, because they're good, not because there's nobody good, you know, that type of situation. So, the last thing we're going to show you here is the Stafford County Public Schools Superintendent desired characteristics. This actually goes up as part of our advertising program. It's a lot of what Ann put in the desired characteristics, maybe just arranged a little differently. I don't think there's anything there that I need to point out. We do have that one thing in there that can tell the SC Stafford County Public School story to many different audiences. Always important to be a good salesperson or marketer for the division. And then let's talk about the last five bullets. Successful candidate needs to be able to be certified as a Virginia superintendent, so important. Sometimes we have substitute teachers and bus drivers who want to be superintendents, and we have to say, "No, you're not going to meet certification." Solid track record of increasing responsibilities and success. We want experience in a medium to large school division or have experience as a superintendent. I'm not going to say that you should only look at sitting superintendents, I think because one of your attributes is somebody who's going to stick and stay for a long time in Stafford County, that stability. I think we have to consider outstanding assistant superintendents or associate superintendents, deputy superintendents who might have a long career ahead of them here in Stafford. And doctorate, we always like to say preferred rather than required. We start with the preferreds because if they have a doctorate, it usually is a little niche higher than the others, but we wouldn't want to rule out somebody who maybe hasn't quite finished their dissertation, or somebody who has a doctoral program plan. So we think that would be silly to pass up a bright young rising star if they did not have the doctorate. I think I filled in most of the holes, I hope to. Ann, is there anything I didn't say that I should have said?
No.
Okay. And so now we are open to your questions.
I have a question or actually a comment. So for transparency's sake, I saw this document and I was wondering, since the community, teachers and parents and students engaged in this, would it be a good idea, even though we know we're looking for a superintendent, to share all or some of this data with them so that they will know like, hey, you know, you heard them, because there's more here than just looking for a superintendent. There are things here that I noticed, even without the search, that is good data.
Two different points on your question. One, we're going to post it so anybody can access it.
Oh, okay, good.
And the second thing is, if you want to use it, I mean, I always find it, if you are about to embark on a strategic plan or something else, it's always invaluable data. Some districts use this data to launch a strategic plan because you've already, as you say, talked to many of your constituents. But the posting should be widespread that anybody can get to this data.
Yeah.
Because they will see their comments. One of the important things that Ann had to script was, we tried to get everybody's comment down so they can say, "Hey, that's my comment up there."
Correct. And what I'm getting at is, you're only specifically talking about those people that can reach the internet. I'm talking about those that can't. And so, yeah.
Yeah, got you.
This will be posted tomorrow on your website as well, and I'm certain that your folks in communication might think about ways that they could make a document.
That's who I was talking to behind you.
Okay.
And also, I-
It's all public information, and we encourage you to use it.
There are a lot of people that use the internet at the libraries. Every time I go to the library, you know, people sign up and it is available even if you can't get it in your home, like many in Hartwood.
Yeah. It's also for people that are not thinking-
And Ms. Young, we could put, I mean, your communications people could put paper copies in the libraries and the schools, so they could be accessible there.
All right, any other questions or comments? No, thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Recognizing our agenda.
Do you want a history of the firm?
No, 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 thank you.
Real quick, because of Ms. Hazard, three old superintendents, and I do say old because two of them are deceased, started this firm probably about 30 or 40 years ago. One of them was Hazard, one was Young, and one was Atia. Young and Atia are deceased, and Atia sold the firm about five years ago.
I'm not dead, I'm right here.
It's a different-
Spelled differently, that one's not.
Okay.
So that's the history of the firm, no association that we know of, unless there's a long-lost cousin somewhere.
Yes, well, it comes up, I think we disclosed it last time around when we used you all, but somebody had brought it up before, so I thought we'd do it.
I told you it was a quick history of the firm, you know?
But we didn't have a Young on the board, now we have a Young on the board too, so we, two out of three. All right, thank you very much, and we'll see you the 12th. Now, they've asked for about 90 minutes with us to go over these candidates. We can do it before the meeting, if we wanted to meet at 5:30 or so, or we could do it after the meeting. What's the board's pleasure? Is this on June 12th?
After.
Yeah, not after, I would agree.
I would.
5:30? Okay, all right, so 5:30, we'll all be here on time, and you're going to bring them with you?
You'll have them ahead of time.
Perfect, all right. So we'll be able to review them ahead of time and be prepared to, you know, to come and discuss them.
What are you going to send?
Okay, that sounds good.
Resume?
The applications.
All right.
You're going to send us the applications that they submitted, correct?
Yes, they'll be out in porto probably about four days before we come.
Okay, so we'll see what they submitted and what, and then you'll give us your feedback on that. Okay, that's great.
Did Dr. Benson put his in there, back again? Did you see it?
No, he's taken. North Carolina is the beneficiary of Dr. Benson's retirement from the Commonwealth of Virginia.
You know what, I just have to mess with him while I see it here.
All right, well, that brings us to citizen comments. Mr. McCosker.
Oh, yes.
Read my favorite saying.
Citizen comments.
Please.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding at the general invitation of the board chair. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation. Speakers shall announce the purpose of their topics and their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The board chairperson reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received in any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the board chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedure outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Now, we have a list of people that signed up, did that end up back with you, Ms. Hall? All right, I know two, Rock Hill speakers were there, I believe, number one and two, and number one is Megan Brown, and she'll be followed by Dana Brown.
He just took my thing.
So Ms. Brown, if you could give us your name and your address when you start, and then the clock will start. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Brown, and I'm from the Rock Hill District at 41 St. Williams Way. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Healy for getting the alternative SOL schedule at Mountainview High School fixed, and so that way I would not have to miss eight blocks of classes at Mountainview because of being a travel student. I just wanted to thank you so much because it was a huge issue, especially for the staff students who would have missed their social studies class. Now I'll let my mother speak.
Well, thank you, Ms. Brown. I'm not sure I did that, but I did make some inquiries, so thank you very much. And now you're followed by Mrs. Dana Brown, and after Ms. Dana Brown, Michelle Wickman.
I'm Dana Brown, Megan's mom. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. That's her first time, I think, but she's very grateful. I'm here to talk about the school calendar. I'm a parent, you know, who's just tired of some of the staff members continually trying to marginalize us parents. Once again, some of them are pushing for an early start to the school year, August 10th, really? And it doesn't seem to be a well-thought-out calendar either. Start school three weeks early and don't even get out three weeks early? Have a Memorial Day, three-day weekend, and then require the kids to come back for two half-days for finals before the last day of school? I'm sure everybody's going to show up for that. Staff always wants to match calendars to other counties, and I've heard them say, you know, "For the convenience of our teachers that don't live here." Wow. You would turn our school year upside down for a handful of people who don't live here. We'll never match the other counties. Some start on time, some start a week early, some start three weeks early. Spring breaks with other counties never line up either, and they never will. Some hook it to Easter, others don't. Staff added more, possibly more than we've ever had, of early outs this time for a whopping 14. All that does is extend the school year. Prince William has none. Where are the teacher workdays for report cards? I didn't see any of that in there. Plus, I'm pretty sure you can't approve calendars two years out unless they're post-Labor Day, because state law requires a waiver to start early, and it must be requested and certified annually. And I do have a state memo that talks about that. When Spotsylvania announced that they would start early in two years, I think they bluffed a bit. They didn't have their waiver, and they didn't have it even applied for, probably because it was too early. And I know because I called the state and asked. And just to give some of you new members some background, several years ago, the school board decided to add parents to the committee because there were so many shenanigans going on with the all-staff committee. They also directed two years' worth of calendars to be done, so we didn't have this controversy every year. Well, two years' calendars were always sent up to you, but one always got lost on the way, maybe because they were post-Labor Day, not sure. When bus drivers didn't support an early start, they were removed from the committee. When some parents wouldn't support an early start, they were removed from the committee. Just remove everybody who doesn't agree. At your February 10th work session on Saturday, the superintendent announced he was doing away with the calendar committee and the parents on it because none of the surrounding counties had that. I'm puzzled by that because that's not the case, and I don't think the superintendent has the power to undo a school board decision, and I don't think the school board can take a vote on something like that at a work session. There's zero evidence starting school early improves test scores. When staff finally admitted that, they tried a new mantra, and that's more time before test. I can debunk that too. A math teacher at North Stafford was on the calendar committee bragging she's been given her test before winter break, which I think is against policy. She must not believe more time is necessary because she's not even given the time they're supposed to have. they're supposed to have, she's giving them less. Please let kids be kids, let them keep their childhood summers. Thank you.
Time that really good.
Perfect timing, Ms. Brown. And Michelle Wickman? And then Chris Lawson will follow Ms. Wickman. Oh, now, is this the North Stafford librarian?
Librarian, yes.
I recognize you from earlier.
Dr. Benson, members of the board, good evening. My name is Michelle Wickman. I live in Hampton Oaks, 305 Bentley Court. I have a third grader and a sixth grader who attend Stafford County schools, and I'm a teacher in the county. I'd like to take the opportunity to speak in favor of a pre-Labor Day calendar. I know that people have spoken against this change, however, I don't recall any of the reasoning being instructionally based. And as a parent, would the change mess with my summer plans? Sure, it would. It would mess them up quite a lot. But nobody's summer plans should be dictating the instructional calendar. Next year, less than 35% of the counties in Virginia will be operating on a post-Labor Day start. Stafford County is in the minority, and I really think that we need to get with the program now, so that it's not another three years before we have the option. Let's be honest, the midterm situation this year was a fiasco for teachers and students alike. Weather-related scenarios like this would likely be a non-issue if exams were mid-December instead of late January. This is just one example of how a pre-Labor Day start would benefit the students of Stafford County, and here are some of the other benefits. First of all, more time for AP testing, which occurs in May every year, no matter what. Some students in my building were concerned this year that they barely had time to learn the content before the testing happened. And if we started three weeks sooner, that's three more weeks that AP students and their teachers would have to prepare for those tests. Whether there's actual data to support higher scores on the test is irrelevant when you're looking at the educational experience that those teachers and students are having, and how they feel taking those tests at that time. If we finish the semester before winter break, currently, students come back from winter break and go right into SOL season, which is then quickly followed by midterms, which are actually final exams for four-by-four classes at the high school. So, this scenario means that students either have to study over break, or they lose valuable time that they could be studying, because they just want to enjoy their vacation, which is legit. We already over-test these kids, and I think that keeping them from losing momentum on vacation, asking them to get their heads back in the game right after winter break, and expecting positive results is an unfair added pressure. Incentive for teachers who live in other counties to work in Stafford, we're trying to recruit teachers, we want them to come here. And anyone with children is more likely to stay away from Stafford if our calendar isn't more closely related. It doesn't have to be exact, but my boyfriend, for example, works in Fredericksburg City, his son goes to school in King George, so they're always off, and three weeks is a long time when you're trying to coordinate schedules like that. That being said, I do think that we need to tweak the details of the proposed calendar. Currently, there's no teacher workday in that pre-Labor Day calendar before winter break, and there's not one after, either. So, not having a teacher workday there is literally saying to your staff, we expect you to finish all that grading over the break. Sorry. Clean up the details, and I think this could be a great calendar, and really the best thing for our students in this county. Thank you.
If you'd like to submit your comments for the record, you can give them to the clerk.
I will, I will email you. Thank you so much.
Send them to our clerk, Ms. Hall.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Chris Lawson, and then Al Watkins will follow Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. Longtime listener slash reader, first-time speaker. Thank you for having me this evening. I do want to tell a story, and I believe Mrs. Brown will enjoy this story. When I first came here, I found out that the state exams were taking place after, I apologize, my name is Chris Lawson, and I work in the Stafford County, I do apologize. But when I first came here, I found out that there are state exams that were required upon passing for their graduation requirements. They were typically taken after the winter break. Unfortunately, the average SOL score was not good, and I took the liberty of measuring all of the data from the last three years. So, since we took the SOLs after the break, we noticed that the scores were dipping. We got together as a PLC, and decided to scrunch down the curriculum bare-bones. Unfortunately, that's what we were forced to do, in order to accommodate all of these kids that were struggling with their SOLs. We worked diligently, late days, and we took as much of the content as we could to compress it, and we were able to use the freedom of adjusting the SOL testing window, and adjust it to prior to the winter break. Those scores jumped 10 points alone, just with geometry, and unfortunately, due to my limited access to the SOL database, I unfortunately am only able to submit this data as a sample for Stafford County, but I have emailed that to Dr. Benson, and, not Ms. Ornic, he was our previous principal, he's skipping my name, Mr. Nichols, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Nichols.
This is recorded, too, so make sure you replay this on my debriefing. So, unfortunately, but luckily, this plan did work, and we did see the scores rise, and they jumped another 15% within a matter of two years. So, it does work if the students are testing prior to a very long break, and we also see that their scores are much higher in June, which, again, is not after a very long break. The calendar is logical, it makes sense, it's well-balanced, you have 90 days of 180-day schedule before winter break, you have 90 after. And all I can say is, I know I speak for my entire school, that this has to happen. Change is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Al Watkins. And if there's anyone else that wants to speak, Mr. Watkins is the last person who signed up. Please get ready to come on up after him.
Good evening, I'm Al Watkins, resident here in Aquia on 314 Hope Road, and I'm a teacher at Colonial Forge High School. This evening, I sent along to the Board of Ed, Dr. Benson and Ms. Cale, a letter and some research in table format regarding the history of teacher compensation here in Stafford, and also how Stafford County teacher pay stacks up when compared to many surrounding divisions. I regret that I only have three minutes to try and identify some of the so-many crucial takeaways that one can view from finally seeing this data up close. Despite having a pay scale that remained unchanged for five years, despite not receiving anticipated step level increases for three years, and years of 1% increases which immediately were deducted to counter VRS contributions, the table's data identifies that moving from the step scale to the experience scale has overall had the worst impact on teacher compensation. That vertical expansion, or spreading out of the scale, has done a great disservice to many veteran teachers. The experience scale instituted in fiscal year 15 will top out next year at 38-plus. As you know, teachers reach full VRS benefits after 30 years of service. How many teachers will be here for 38 years to reach the top of the scale? Looking at the table I provided, comparing fiscal year eight to fiscal year 18, currently in steps one through nine, traveling across the scale, teachers there have seen percentage increases. However, from year 10 through 30, salary has decreased at every one of those veteran levels. For example, a 20-year teacher in 2008 earned $58,940. A 20-year teacher in 2018 makes $56,702. In other words, had Stafford County Public Schools kept the very pay scale they utilized in 2008, that teacher would ultimately have gone on to earn $2,238 more than they currently do by using the experience scale. Moving on to the other table I provided, the pay-scale comparison table involving SCPS, I would suggest, after analyzing the data there, that SCPS does not compete for teachers with divisions of Hanover, Henrico, Chesterfield, Albemarle, and Chesapeake. Those counties should be eliminated from any potential comparison, replaced by other divisions on the table that Stafford County does actually compete with. There's much to take away from analyzing the pay-scale comparison table, and here's just one. If a teacher, having just completed their 26th year in Stafford, were to be hired in Prince William, which accepts just 12 of those 26 years of experience, they would still start off at a higher salary in Prince William. Compensation is not only valued as utilized in recruiting and retaining employees, but it's also very crucial. I also make myself available to all members to discuss this data collection and analysis further, in the hope that new leadership, working with all stakeholders with the county, can arrive at a fair-minded competitive compensation plan. And now, I'll take a breath.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. All right. Have someone else that wishes to speak? A familiar face?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Terry Welborn. I'm in the Falmouth District, and I'm a bus driver here in Stafford, and I wanted to speak about the calendar. I'm not sure whether starting early or later is good for the kids or not, but I know it's bad to start early for the bus drivers. August is notoriously hazy, hot, and humid. Hazy, hot, and humid, every day. We have no air conditioning on 99.99% of our buses. I think we just got four mainstream buses that got AC, the rest of us don't. It's hot on those buses. So, if you start in the middle of August, keep that in mind, we're going to be out there from 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock in the afternoon. You're not supposed to go outside between 2:00 and 4:00 in August. So, it's hot. If you decide to do a pre-Labor Day start, I would ask that you start retrofitting mainstream buses with air conditioning. They did it with the special needs buses. Most of our buses can be retrofitted with air conditioning. I don't know the numbers, but I think it's doable. So, it's a few years out, if you would think about starting to retrofit those. Last couple of days have been hot. I do not want to be out there in August in that heat. So, some things to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Yes, when you finish, if you could, sign in. Ms. Welborn knows the drill.
I'm Dorothy Wood, 315 Queen Anne Drive in the Hartwood District. My comments in regards to the pre-Labor Day start. As a member of previous calendar committees, the benefits of a pre-Labor Day start are obvious. A pre-Labor Day calendar is driven by the uninterrupted delivery of instruction. The end of the second quarter is before winter break, and spring break is at the end of the third quarter. These are sensible breaks not meant to disrupt the delivery of instruction. Students will have more instruction prior to the SOL windows and IBAP testing. CGS students would start instruction at the same time as their peers in other counties participating in this regional program. This calendar would be more considerate of our military families who may be moving. So often, military families have their homes and belongings packed and shipped weeks prior to school ending. Their leases have ended, causing them to live in a hotel room until school ends. Orientation for many colleges and universities, both in-state and out-of-state, are held at the beginning of June. An additional four-day weekend is created on these pre-Labor Day calendars, on President's Day weekend, and a three-and-a-half-day weekend for Easter. There are two weeks off for winter break, giving students and teachers a truly enjoyable winter break. Not all Stafford County public school employees live in Stafford. Living in a county with a pre-Labor Day start while working in a county with a post-Labor Day start may cause childcare challenges and additional childcare expenses. Students also would be able to compete for better summer jobs, typically taken by college students who can start working earlier in the summer. In regards to the temperatures, I did an average temperature last year. The hottest month is July. August is not the hottest month. And as far as the buses being hot, there's summer school in July. So, are we going to cancel summer school because it's hot, and the buses are hot? I don't think so. If Stafford County truly wants to evolve and be innovative, our school system cannot keep accepting the status quo. I urge you to be bold, and don't be afraid to of a change. Demonstrate to our students how you can embrace change and improve their learning experience. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, and come to the superintendent. Do you have comments, Dr. Benson?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Oh, darn. All right. That moves us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action items. 9.01, approve high school student fees for fiscal year 2019.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.01.
Okay, motion by Ms. Egan.
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Just a brief-
Discussion. I just want to, my comment would be that to make sure that those injured individuals, students that cannot afford this, and do you want to, that there is some kind of accommodation made for this fee?
There are.
Okay.
And if you want to get some more information on that, you could talk with Dr. Nichols.
That's fine, I just want to make sure that there is.
Yes, there is. Did you have a comment or question, Ms. Hazard?
Just a comment, I just wanted to thank the board for waiting on this item till after we had approved the budget. I'm glad that we didn't have to raise fees on our students to meet the operational needs for this school division, but I do think that's something that we have to just keep our eyes on as we move forward in the budget season. And again, I just thank you all for waiting till after budget approval.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion to approve 9.01, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.02, approve the award of professional services, consulting contracts, open-ended term contracts for archaeological, structural, civil, and sanitary engineering, geotechnical, environmental, industrial hygiene, roofing, and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.02.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.03, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Office of Administrative and Legal Services.
Madam Chair, motion to approve 9.03.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by?
Second.
Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Hazard.
I know that we have the, excuse me, the information contained in 2402 relating to claims of sexual harassment or harassment, whether this will be communicated to staff and students in some way. I know there's been some comments about what are procedures for complaints. I just want to make sure that we also have some kind of either training for our administrators over the summer of any changes that have been made, and the procedures to be used.
Okay, I'm sure, Dr. Benson, you'll make sure that that gets just-
Get not from staff as well, so.
Right. And Mrs. Cale, you'll make sure that it gets disseminated. Yes, thank you very much. And this is really a great thing we've been able to do, because we've been asked for quite a while to address this. All right. And no other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to 9.04. Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policy 2401 and Regulation 2401-R, Student Code of Conduct, as reviewed by the Office of Administrative and Legal Services. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, 9.0- Motion to approve the superintendent proposed revision, policy 2401, and- 2401-R.
Thought it was on a roll.
Okay. I'll take that as a motion from Ms. Young. Is that a second from?
Sure.
Ms. Egan? Got to be fast.
I learn from you. Learn from the best.
All right. Any discussion on this one?
Brief discussion.
Ms. Hazard.
I just hope that maybe perhaps next year, we might look at the added parts to 2401 to potentially be included in 2402 next year relating to harassment. Since we've broadened the characteristics in 2401, we might want to do that next year with 2402 as well, just of what's covered.
Okay. Got to start here.
Comment. Can we also make sure that this information is disseminated out to some of the students that were interested in it somehow?
This is going to be disseminated to all, all our students and our staff as well. But I think, Dr. Benson, do you think we should send this to our diversity committee?
We have another meeting coming up, and I'll let the board... I'll let them know that the board approved the recommended changes.
And please extend our thanks for their work and their contributions on this change. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
Four? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.05, approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to Regulation 2412-R, symbolic expression, appearance, dress, gestures, as reviewed by the Office of Administrative and Legal Services. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve by Ms. Young. Second by Ms. Decatur. All right.
I'm back.
Gang's all here. Yes. Thank you very much.
We're rolling.
We're on a roll.
Yes, we are.
All right. Any discussion?
Your little one can wear his ones and think he's okay.
All right. All in favor of the motion to approve 9.05, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, brings us to information items. Now, these items will come back to us at the next meeting for action. 10.01, approve a payment in the amount of $167,969 to Tyler Technologies, Inc., using budgeted FY '19 operating funds for enterprise resource planning, ERP, annual maintenance and support costs. Any questions about this item? Okay. If you have any questions that come up later, just contact Mr. Fulmer, right? Okay, thank you. 10.02, approve the 2019-2020 instructional calendar as option one, a pre-Labor Day start date, or option two, a post-Labor Day start date, and the 2020-21 instructional calendar as option one, pre-Labor Day start date, or option two, a post-Labor Day start date. I believe Dr. Benson is going to give us a brief presentation on this item.
And I will be brief, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, this is a tough issue, and it's been a tough issue for us for years. And I think part of it is that the things that folks are passionate about is the reason for why they may want a post-Labor Day or a pre-Labor Day start is that they're really passionate about that thing. And whatever that one thing is, that's the thing that they really kind of hang on to. I think it's really hard to do a comprehensive list of pros and cons and end up trying to figure out whether I've got more pluses or minuses. So what I want to do is I want to talk a little bit about some of the issues that we've discussed over the years and just some considerations for the board. But I'm going to suggest that many of these things are kind of in a gray area, right? Not so cut and dry. Because I guarantee you, if we were to go out and do another survey about just putting the calendars out there, do you want pre-Labor Day or post-Labor Day? I bet we would get results that are similar to what we got a year ago because the reasons that folks are passionate about whatever calendar they prefer, they're passionate about those things. And I think that makes it really difficult to get us to move in a different direction. So what I'm challenging the board to do is just kind of try to think about this big picture moving forward. So first of all, with regard to policy and the establishment of a calendar committee, there... Ms. Healy, there's a "may" in here, right? And that is that I may use a committee. And then it says if I do use the committee, then there's a will. I guess should be a shall as to what that would look like, okay? I did not use a committee this year. I've got input from my teacher advisory group and my parent advisory group, but we basically put two calendars together for each of the next two years. Not next year, not 18, 19, but for 1920 and 2021. But this is very clear, right? And very much black and white as that there is an option here to look at things a little bit differently. And yes, we did look to see how other school divisions go about putting together calendars. And there are a number of school divisions in our comparison group that use a different structure than what we have been using. So I informed the board that we would be going a different path this time, and we've got some calendars to share with the board as a result of that. I would note that we very much appreciate the work of the calendar committee over the years. I don't want to shortchange the efforts that were there because there were a lot of really good discussions, and we had some really, I could think, good proposals coming forward. But I think we've kind of explored all of the options over the years, and I think now it's time just to kind of sit back and look at all of those things and then have the board determine whether or not we need to head in a different direction or not. So I do want to show the surveys from the last time we surveyed. And this survey was simply, here are two calendars, one's post-Labor Day, one's pre-Labor Day. What do you think about it as a parent? What do you think about it as a staff? And as I stated earlier, I suspect if we surveyed again, we probably would get similar results. And we're not far off of 50/50% for both of the groups. If the board has an interest in doing that with the calendars that are being proposed, we certainly could open up a poll on our website. We'd get some help from Ms. Johnson's folks. But I don't know that you would get anything different than what we've gotten previously, and I'm going to go back to that because what people like about each one of those calendars, they're passionate about, and they're going to hang on to that thing about that particular calendar. So we heard a little bit about transportation and the buses being hot, okay? And so, yeah, that could be an issue, or it could not be an issue depending upon what perspective the board wants to take. We only have about 4% of our buses, mainstream buses, have air conditioning on them. So if that were a goal that the board wanted to work on in terms of increasing retrofitting our mainstream buses, that's certainly something that we could look at. Some of our comparison divisions have gone that route. Spotsylvania, as an example, has about 44% of their mainstream fleet air-conditioned buses, and they have a pre-Labor Day start scheduled for next year. Falkir, also a pre-Labor Day start, has 0% of their buses air-conditioned. So it's another one of these gray areas. It can be an issue, or it cannot be an issue. And we know that we've dealt with some challenges of late with temperature fluctuations during a part of the year when you would not expect it to be close to 90 degrees and very humid. There's certainly more information that we could bring to bear here, but there's not really a showstopper that would say one way or the other, you cannot make this thing work, whether it's pre-Labor Day or post-Labor Day. So in terms of achievement, I appreciate the information that was provided this evening. If you look at test scores from surrounding divisions that have gone to a pre-Labor Day start, I think you'd be hard-pressed to say that there's a statistically significant change in the levels of achievement. I don't think we've collected enough specific information to be able to say that we're headed there. I do appreciate what we heard this evening on a much smaller scale, but if you just go out and look at SOL scores and you know what year the school division changed from a post-Labor Day to a pre-Labor Day, there doesn't seem to be a little bit of change. I don't think you can call it... I didn't run like a P-test on it or anything, but I don't think you could call it statistically significant, okay? There is that notion of, does it make sense to finish your work for the semester prior to the winter break and not have that holdover when you come back? And some of that, I think, is true with positioning of spring break, which we have traditionally attached to the Easter holiday. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. But I'm having a hard time pointing to like a large amount of data that says, oh, my gosh, right? Absolutely need to head in this direction because of this. Is there some that might suggest some improvement? Absolutely, okay? Enough to say without question we should move? Probably not. So it's, again, it's a gray area. Testing. Okay, one of the things that we've heard is that there's a lot of assessment that goes on at the elementary level as you approach the winter break. Some of that's within our control, and we can decide what that schedule looks like. Some of it is participation in the PALS assessment, for example. But I will tell you that the PALS assessment window for assessment changes based upon when you start school. So the earlier start, that window moves back from the winter break, right? So is this an absolutely you should go, absolutely not go? Probably not. Is there a reason to stop you? Probably not. Payroll, okay? So we have a... In the transition year, this is really interesting, right? So in the transition year, you're going to have folks that on one cycle had their first paycheck in October, and in the next cycle, they're going to get their first paycheck in September, which, you know, on one level would be great for new teachers. It would be coming a little bit earlier in August. They would still get that stipend that we're giving them for participating in the new teacher institute, but then they would get their first check at the beginning of September. So the bonus for teachers in the year that we transition is you get two paychecks in a given month. So you get one from the last year and one from the new year for one time. And so we've heard some teachers talk about the need to be working a second job during the summer, and that might, you know, limit the amount of time that they can do that in a transition year. There would be two paychecks in September. And then the next year, you would still have a significant summer. It's just it would start shortly after Memorial Day, and we would be looking at a start potentially in the second week in August. But we are poised, if the board should decide to entertain, maybe explore and go in this direction, that we could certainly execute that. So cost, okay? So obviously, if we were to throw into the mix the need potentially to look at retrofitting buses with air conditioning, we would have to work that into the cost. But there's also been some conversation about the cost related to the differential in heating and cooling costs. And I think we had a video that was played last year from a previous board meeting that suggested it might be in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars or so. So I asked our energy manager to do an analysis based upon historical data for us. And so 15 occupied days in August would have an increased cost of about $303,000. 10 unoccupied days in June would be a savings of about $187,000. 10 unoccupied days in winter, because we would shut down for basically two weeks during the winter break, we would save approximately $158,000, which means there would be a net savings if the board... Based upon historical data, of about $42,500 if the board should choose to go in this direction. Is that significant enough savings to say, oh, my gosh, we should start early? Well, probably not. Is it enough to say, you know, you should stick with a traditional calendar? Well, probably not. So it's just... There are a lot of gray areas in every one of these considerations that we have talked about over the years. CGS, okay, which came up again this evening, and having our schools not all start at the same time. So at the most recent CGS board meeting, we were provided with a report that had some recommendations from the Department of Education that were really geared at trying to get students across sites to work more collaboratively, okay? And one of the things that was noted in two places in the report was that three of the school systems that participate in the governor's schools were going to be able to work more closely in the coming year, well, because they are on the same calendar. Now, we've also heard previously that, you know, that we can make that work at the same time. There might be some challenges associated with that. It's not just the divisions, though, that are in the Commonwealth Governor's School. These are the start dates for the first day of school for this coming school year for our contiguous school systems. And I picked the contiguous ones because one of the ways that you can get a waiver is that if you're surrounded by school systems that are starting prior to...
That'll do it.
...the winter break. Or prior... Sorry, I've got that winter break on my mind. Prior to Labor Day. So next year, Stafford and the city of Fredericksburg are the only two that will be starting post-Labor Day. And the other thing that's interesting is the majority of the surrounding divisions, and Prince William is certainly an exception, the majority of them are starting early enough to finish the first semester prior to the winter break, okay? And quite frankly, if you're not going to start early enough to finish before the winter break, it makes no sense at all to even consider this. So I just want to make the board aware of what is happening around us. And I think we heard a statistic about the percentage of divisions in the Commonwealth that remain on a post-Labor Day, post-Labor Day start. So there's a clear copy of this in your agenda item. This is a traditional calendar for the 2019-20 school year, and it has pretty much what you would expect to see in a traditional calendar. We have a post-Labor Day start. We have, you know, basically what you have seen in previous years with minor tweaks based upon where the end of the marking periods fall, but it looks pretty much like we've seen before, okay? We also have a calendar for that same school year that is a pre-Labor Day start. We would welcome our new teachers the second week in August, and we would start on the 12th if this were of interest to the board, finishing the first semester prior to the winter break. Now, I agree that there are tweaks that could be applied to this. And one of the challenges in terms of getting the workdays in there is getting the number of instructional days in so we can say that the semester is done. But that we certainly could go back if the board is interested in moving in this direction. We certainly could go back and look what changes we would make. And then there's full two weeks off at the winter break. And again, we pretty much shut down as a school system, and we recruit some savings based upon historical data related to heating of our facilities. The other thing that's different about this one is that spring break is moved up into March. So there's a workday at the end of the third marking period for teachers to finish their grading, and then the following week is identified as spring break, so that you have a week off between the third and fourth semester, okay? And we wrap up right near the end of... Right near the end of May around Labor Day. Yeah, there are some things here that are not perfect. And, you know, part of the challenge, again, is making sure we get those instructional days in, the 180 days of instruction, 90 days per semester. And so that creates some anomalies with where holidays fall. We didn't incorporate a three-day weekend for the Easter holiday. It's not what we are used to, but there seems to be some sense into having a spring break at the conclusion of a marking period and fixing it so that it's always at the end. So people know when we get to the end of the third marking period, there's going to be a week of spring break. So we've done the same thing for the 2021 year. So we have a traditional post-Labor Day calendar. It looks very similar to the one for 1920. And then also for 2021, we have a pre-Labor Day calendar. So that leaves us kind of at a decision point in terms of moving forward. I would encourage the board to leave this sitting out there for more... For information more than just this meeting. And I think that's something that we have discussed, Ms. Healy. I think it would make sense to have it on the agenda for a couple of meetings, this meeting and another meeting for information. Give board members an opportunity to get additional input. I mean, if there's other information that you would like us to pull together, we certainly can do that. I just, I don't think there is that definitive one thing that's going to say, oh, my gosh, we need to go. But I also don't think there's a definitive one thing that says, oh, my gosh, we can't move to a pre-Labor Day opening. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Egan?
I do. There sort of is one definitive thing for me. I mean, anybody who knows me, who's been watching my vote on this for the past four years, whatever it's been, I think Mrs. Hazard and I have been most vocal about it. We support the pre-Labor Day start. I like the calendar the way it is. It looks great with one exception. And you hit it as your first critique on it, which was the lack of the teacher workday. I don't... I want to give something back to the teachers, and making them work on their break time isn't a gift, it's a punishment. So I really would like to see that a day put back in before, if we can find some way to make that happen. It's a day. So I think that would mean a lot to them. Otherwise, I think it's great. All my parents, all of my teachers in my district have supported this. They support it this time, and I'm going to be supporting this when it comes up for a vote.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, Ms. Young?
We can go either way, yeah.
So my experience, and it's not from here, but my schooling has been 11 months in a year, so definitely more school to me is better preparation for the kids.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
I just wanted a point of clarity on the 10 days of no heating.
Reduced heating.
Reduced heating. So, yeah. So is reduced heating. But don't we currently do seven days of reduced heating? So, is reduced heating, but don't we currently do seven days of reduced heating? So is that just the savings for the three, or, I mean, are we counting the days that we currently, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I would have to get Mr. Shrimp to provide some additional information about that. I got the summary report from him, but I'm very confident.
I don't think it would change a huge amount, but I, just for clarity. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Decatur.
I guess the only thing that I would like to see sometime between now and when we, you know, do go to vote is potential costs for retrofitting these buses if we were to go down that path, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard.
I think the point's been raised about the teacher workday and kind of like when grades are due. I think just sort of clarifying how that fits on top of the calendar so that, you know, and I would invite, I know, it sounds like you've talked to the teacher advisory group, but if they even have suggestions about that of, is it when grades are due, whatever? Because I can at least speak to this year, and I won't, you know, the midterms and that mess in January. But I will say, is having a senior this year having grades due to colleges, that was a tight call this year, and I know a lot of them missed those deadlines. Granted, they go to the schools and they say that, but when you're competing sometimes, I mean, my daughter was thrilled where she was going, but for some that are really competing for spots, needing those grades early is pretty critical. So, I think the grading and some of that, just discussing that to make sure we're good.
Okay, Mr. McOscar.
No, it's a good brief and good points by the board. You know, there's pros and cons, and that's kind of how I look at it, and that's how I've always looked at it, and I've always voted against a pre-Labor Day start. And, you know, so the costs are concerning, you know, throwing the kids on the bus early in August are concerning, retrofitting. You know, in the wintertime, you just can't shut the building down, and that was a good question. You just can't shut the building down for two weeks and then come back to a 42 rebuilding, because then it'll take two weeks to heat back up and the kids will be freezing. So, there will have to be some ongoing, some ongoing costs with that. I'm not so sure the costs are going to weigh out. You know, and that, a whole point about the testing, you know, and I'm still, I'm still going to get ahold of the state of Maryland. The state of Maryland did a year-long study, and I haven't, I haven't read it, but they're actually reverting back to a, going to a post-Labor Day start as a whole state. But some other information that I'd like is the waiver issue. The waiver issue is very tricky because the state of Virginia requires, only allows this if every single division, from what I understand, every single division around you landlocks. Right now, we're not landlocked, because Fredericksburg City is still on a post-Labor Day start, so we don't meet that waiver. Then the other waiver, I understand, is the amount of days missed, whether it's snow, rain, sleet, hail. So I'd like to see those, that waiver, because what, I think what we don't want is, right now, we have to have a waiver, and the waiver has to be submitted a year out. So how are we going to get around that, even if the board votes, but we don't, we don't have the waiver authority through, from the state? If the Fredericksburg Christian, I mean Fredericksburg Christian, Fredericksburg City stays the way it is. So, you know, that's a concern, and then teacher workday is a concern for me. You know, getting out cleanly before the break with testing, that makes kind of, once again, it makes sense on the briefing slides, however, we can't point to any data points that show that it's actually beneficial to the kids. So, anyway, yeah, show me it's better for the kids, and, I mean, I think we've beat that drum that it's not, so, the early Labor Day. So just to change, just to change, I'm not so sure that's such a good idea, but I'm willing to hear the data.
Thank you, Mr. McOscar. I would like to follow up on Dr. Chase's question with respect to the dollars, because there are eight days, I'm looking at pink in the calendar, eight weekdays on the post-Labor Day and 10 on the, on the pre-Labor Day. So it seems like the maximum savings would be potentially from two. So, and I appreciate you saying it was, and I'll just paraphrase, marginal savings and not something that's going to make a significant difference in the final decision, but I just think that, you know, the transparency, we should have some, you know, an accurate figure there on the cost. And I'd also like to follow up on the waiver issue. I think we need to have information as a board as to how that would be addressed. We certainly don't want to approve something that's not in conformity.
And I'm not suggesting that the surrounding county waiver would be the path to go. I mean, if you look at the majority of the counties that are to the west of 95, they start prior to, prior to Labor Day, and they have for a long time.
Right, and I have no idea how they got their waivers, but if Stafford County's going to be considering it, you know, I'd like, as a voting member
Absolutely.
... to make sure that I have the authority to approve something, even if it's going to be contingent on the grant of a waiver. And I think those who know me know, in the past, I've always supported the post-Labor Day. I'm certainly open to, you know, listening, but I would appreciate the affected parties, the parents and students in the community, if they have any input to share that with us. Now, how does the board feel about putting this on for information, again, at the next meeting and then bringing it for a vote on the second meeting in June? Does that work for everyone? I think that, you know, will give us, and we talked to Dr. Benson when we were putting the agenda together, that we didn't, you know, Mr. McOscar and I thought that the board might want some more time to, you know, be able to gather input, you know, on this. Because, you know, every time we vote on this, you know, we have some of the same people in the community, but we have new members as well. And I think we need to hear from everyone, although those numbers were very telling. I mean, it was, it was pretty darn close to half and half.
It was.
Yeah, that's amazing.
And I suspect that the board might be split somewhat in terms of where we may land. And I just ask the board to take, you know, to look very closely at this. I think that we're going to be an outlier over time if we don't move in this direction at some point. I do think there are some general benefits that we probably cannot quantify, but, you know, we'll discuss it in the coming weeks.
Well, I'm not concerned about being an outlier, because I think Stafford County has always prided itself on doing what's best for our community and our schools. So, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll come to a, you know, a decision that meets the needs of the, of the community, as well as the schools. But I really appreciate your, your presentation.
Brief.
And I think it was very clear that there really isn't any compelling data for either side here. So, I appreciate that, because in the past, when this issue has come to the board, very often, it's been, ah, there's all these, you know, benefits. And then it was sort of like popping the balloons and they kind of, you know, went away. Well, anyway, that brings us to the next item, which is establish school board's legislative priorities, 10.03. Now, who wants to, Mrs. Hazard, do you want to address this? I know it's getting late, and we do have a closed session, unfortunately, after this. So...
Primarily, this is brought because of the email we received from the Board of Supervisors asking for our input fairly early in June. And so, I, the Legislative Committee, I believe, Missy, are we meeting June 4th? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. But they're, they're asking for input, I believe it's the 8th or the 9th, and I'm sorry not to have the date right in front of me. It was really, I thought, for an opportunity to kind of get from the board, is there something we're totally missing? I was going to throw out a couple options of things, I thought, the Legislative Committee. So I feel like we are kind of being asked to give something before we would pass our adopted legislative priorities, so I just wanted to give some guidance. As you all may know, the cost to compete remains on there, school nurses, some of the reciprocity for teachers and permitting. I think those are some things we were going to discuss more with Ms. Beuthright and Dr. Benson at that meeting. I had a couple suggestions just to throw out and see if there's anybody that finds these want to be added. I would say social workers as the SOQs, maybe special education, ESL, based on what was read on the superintendent search. ESL came up an awful lot, so I thought that might be one. And I think we should actually talk about pre-K funding from the state. I think we need to crack that nut and begin to bring that to the board, so, and maybe security. But those would be some of the additions, I would think, but the pre-K, I think, would be a great thing for spring.
Well, when do we have to have this? I mean, do we have time to have this at the next meeting? I don't think we're really in a position to do too much tonight to establish priorities.
We could definitely type something up and send it to Missy, though.
Before the, before our meeting was, I just felt like we needed to at least discuss it, so if there was an idea here tonight of saying, oh my gosh, I really want to make sure you all look at this, that we brought it.
Well, does the board have any objection to sending something over saying this is what our Legislative Committee has been discussing, and the board will, you know, be addressing it in the, you know, in the future? I mean, we got such short notice, it's really not time to have a discussion.
I think whatever we had for the last was appropriate. All of those things we want to continue to advocate for.
Well, and that's why I suggested adding those other things, though.
Nurses, SOL.
I would really like to see those on there, and not even maybe security, but absolutely.
Yeah, I think the pre-K funding and ESL. The pre-K is really important.
Pre-K and special education funding, that's what I was going to ask you about.
And the SOQs for social workers, I'm thinking...
We're going to take what we had last time, adding pre-K funding and the...
This was just sort of a polling for the board to be aware that we were requested. I just didn't want anybody to feel bad.
Fam's getting nervous, looking around.
Is there anything, I don't know, is there anything, did you find anything about ESL?
What I did is, these were some areas that I thought we could address, that we would add into this, this document. So, it was more tonight to talk about areas for us to pursue as the Legislative Committee.
And we can always amend it, I think, at some time in the future if something urgent comes up.
And like I said, the last set of legislative priorities, I think there was one issue that was addressed by the legislature, which was the licensure. I don't think, I don't think anything else on that list had got any traction at all. So, I for one would love to see cost to compete put at the top of the list again.
I was really, this was really meant to allow all board members an opportunity to throw something in there. That's what it was meant to do.
So why don't we just go ahead?
So we're going to adopt what we had from last year, and is there any objection to adding preschool funding and special education funding?
ESL and...
No objection at all.
ESL and social workers. All right. This is kind of our wish list, though.
They asked for it, right?
All right. All right, so, Dr. Benson, do you need anything from us to put that together?
We're going to meet on the 4th.
Oh, you, right, but we have to get this over to the, to the supervisors, right?
About an eighth.
Okay, so who's it going to come from? Can we have...
We circulate it after we meet on the 4th.
Okay, and I suggest, since we're not going to have another meeting before then, that we, once we, you know, unless we have anything to add to it, that we have it go from Dr. Benson to Mr. Foley.
That's fine.
And this is, you know, per the board's discussion. And I would suggest that we, we say that we reserve the right to, not reserve the right, but we, we may amend it in the future if we, you know, if we identify any additional significant items.
Ms. Healy?
We could put initial legislative priorities.
All right, so the committee will get it circulated to the board. The board can send any comments. I suggest the board send any comments to Dr. Benson, because he'll, he's the one that's going to be putting it all together. And then if there are any significant comments, then the committee will have to address them. Okay? All right, moving right along. Oh my goodness. 10.04, oh my gosh, this is the one we did not get to in our work session, darn. Approved funding for the FY18-FY19 infrastructure project list using FY18 operational savings. And I believe Mr. Haran had some changes to this, did you say, briefly?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, board members. So you're right, we did not get to it in the work session. And it certainly needs some time for the board to dialogue and discuss these items, which are all important. The list that was provided to you as part of the agenda item has been updated, and, but we did not get it to you. We were planning to discuss during the work session those changes, and I didn't feel it was prudent or appropriate for me to refresh that screen now without proper dialogue with the board. So, but in essence, the format and the, most of the projects are the same. We were just updating some of the numbers. Staff has taken the liberty to insert some proposed projects on the list, which are not present on your current list. And so, I will not try to discuss those with you at this time. We'll provide that to you tomorrow, so you can start to look at that and dialogue. But I wanted to just go over the list and the formatting. The green, the projects in green are funded, either through the school board directing funds to be applied for that, or staff being able to fund it with operational funds. And if you have any questions on those, please, you can ask those to me tonight, I'm prepared to answer those. The two in yellow are projects that staff is proposing. Those are inserts from the originally approved list. We've talked about them. I think both, all the board members are aware of those particular projects in yellow. One is the conversion, the bathroom added to the Gary Melcher's classrooms. And the second is moving the colonial, the modular at Colonial Forge to Hartwood Elementary School. We're proposing that the savings from the Hartwood wastewater treatment plant, as I briefed the board several months ago, that there was proposed savings. The county has come back and told us that you have the authority to use those funds how you feel fit. So we had that from county staff. So we're proposing to use that $145,000 to fund both those efforts. But again, you don't need to provide any direction tonight at all on those, but that's being proposed. The projects in blue, there's three projects in blue, they're un-executable for year-end funds. So I just want you to know, they're originally on the list, but we were unable to have those projects ready and executable for this, for you to consider funding those. So they will roll into FY19 and how we address projects that particular year. All the projects in gray are executable and ready for your direction. You can certainly discuss among yourselves if you want to try to move some up over others. I don't want to speak for Chris Fulmer, but his target right now, he feels comfortable for the end of year, is somewhere in the $2 million mark. As he progresses with the June payroll, he'll know more whether you feel comfortable going past that. But that is kind of the, if we had to draw a line right now, we, staff would be recommending the $2 million mark. Anything that's above that line would be probably funded if you approve that. Anything below it, the probability of funding is questionable. Does that make sense?
Sure, well, let's answer Mr. Haran's question. Does that make sense to everybody? Makes sense to me.
Okay.
All right, now we're open to questions, Ms. Young.
Can you explain to me again what you mentioned about the blue? Did you say there's...
Yes, ma'am. The blue, the projects in blue, there's three of them.
Yes. Two of them are Garrison Bell.
Well, two of them, they're associated with North Stafford. One is the main entrance.
No, one is Hampton Oaks and, and one is North Stafford. HES, Hampton.
Hartwood.
Hartwood, okay, so, roof.
Those projects...
Isn't that important?
Well, they're all important.
Okay.
Okay, so, they are un-executable at this point. We are not prepared to either obtain pricing on that, bid them out, they're just, we're not there.
Okay.
We had hoped to be there.
Okay.
But circumstances, each one is unique and upon itself, and we can certainly talk about each one, but they are just not executable at this time.
Okay, I was just wondering, like, if rain or weather or something permits that this repair...
No, they're just, we are not prepared to get pricing on this. We're not finished the planning, design.
Actually.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
And then the other one I was mentioning, upgrade entrances, does that have anything to do with security?
No, no, that's the main entrances of the site. One is on Shelton Chop Road, and the other is on 610. And the gist of that is to improve the pedestrian walkway essentially, adding sidewalks and those type of things on that school.
Got it.
And that was started late, no excuse, but it was started late, and we're going through the review process with the county, and VDOT's involved in that and makes it a little problematic.
So is this parallel with what's being built over there? Because that's, like, there's confusion, like, if this is something that is part of that...
We are coordinating with the development.
Okay, got it.
That's to the east of North Stafford High School. So we are in discussions on who's doing what and how we can do those things, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Scott, so I have Mr. Haran, Mr. Haran, sorry. So he used to back talk.
Slap, slap.
Yeah. So, now that we, as a board, and I think we're all, we're all under the understanding that Ferry Farm, at best, would be, is going to be a renovation, and at worst, it'll be a partial renovation, a few fixes, so, which is better than... it'll be a partial renovation, a few fixes. So, which is, is better than getting pushed out 10 years. But is there any, and I know we had discussed this, is there any way that we can start getting some of the other stuff fixed that probably is not going to be identified for the renovation at Ferry Farm?
You bet, sir. So two, two issues I'd like to bring up. One is we have added a proposal to do an analysis to assist with the capital improvement, the large project. So that's one. The second is we've already, we've already started, right or wrong, we've already started the conceptual planning and the design for the pavement improvements associated with the project, with Ferry Farm. And then third, there is a project that, if the board's willing to consider as part of this process, to make some significant upgrades to the gym, which is in the newer, newer part of the facility. Flooring, sound attenuation panels, ceiling and painting, basically very similar to what we did to North Stafford's gym, but on a much smaller scale.
Right.
For roughly about $70,000. So that project is available, and it's, it's projects like that, that you will start to see infusing itself in the infrastructure list as, as that matures and we go further, you know, based on the decision that the board or the supervisors, both of you may make with the CIP here in the future.
All right.
So yes, the answer is we could, we could insert that project if it's the will of the board.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Haran.
Ms. Hazer. I know, Mr. Haran, you and I talked after our Head Start Policy Council meeting. There are, I believe the board can see that the 1.3 is repair security alarms at the Gary Melchers Center. There is some concern with the addition of the four classrooms of which wing they are on for Gary Melchers. Gary Melchers does not have a perimeter of fencing and stuff. I know, Mr. Haran, you're looking into it. You don't have to get into it tonight, but I just wanted to identify that to the board, that the policy council did ask us to think about that perimeter security, because I call it the back. They have had people wandering through onto Melchers, and it's very hard to see that. I'm going to give the, the part, I know Mr. Haran's looking into it, but the policy council wanted me to at least bring that to the attention, that they do have some security concerns just because of how that building is currently.
How about the lighting, lighting in the parking lot? Isn't that a concern also?
Unfortunately, we can't do the, the parking lot. I saw it on there, Mr. Haran. I know it's a blue, but, so I was just, I felt like I wasn't, the policy council wanted me to bring that, so I wanted to just say, and I don't disagree with them.
That's something we'll need to look at, probably with year-end funds.
Well, we are addressing the, the fencing issue and the security, and I think, I think we're going to be able, I won't tell you 100%, but I think we're going to be able to address some of that without, without getting to this list. To answer your question, Ms. Young, I think the lighting, well, I don't think. I know the lighting part is part of that repair pavement project.
Thank you very much for addressing me, Mr. Haran.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate.
All right, any other questions, comments? I, I have one thing, and this is just when it comes back to us. I would like to get some information on the relocate the modular to Hartwood. I'm always very sensitive to adding anything to Hartwood because of the water and the well, and, you know, we've talked about it for years. I'd like to find out if there is a preschool class that perhaps could be relocated, you know, for the year, because hopefully the year after we'll have Fredericksburg Christian that would free up a classroom there. Then perhaps we would not need to add the modular and add, you know, additional, you know, weight on that, that well system.
You bet.
So just when it comes back, you don't need to.
You betcha.
No. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the item, you don't, better stay there. 10.05, respond to the board of supervisors' request for confirmation of the school board's current capital improvement project priorities. Now, when Mr. McCosker and I worked on the agenda, we wanted to phrase this item as responding to the project priorities rather than the entire CIP. If the board wants to expand that to the CIP, you know, it's, it's a pleasure of the board. But right now, you know, what I understood the board wanted us to do, the board of supervisors, was to identify our priorities. And, and I apologize for not giving you the time and for the infrastructure projects, but I think we really needed, you know, all that time to hash through it, and I, I think the board, you know, did pretty well on that. So do you want to put our revised, do you have that slide that you, here by any chance?
Missy refreshed it.
Oh, yeah, right. I didn't know.
So you should have an updated PDF with that funding profile.
Yes, I saw that there.
Hopefully we captured everything that the board discussed in the work session.
Certainly looked like it to me.
Yeah, it was a refresh there.
The one area.
It's right here. Can you share mine?
The one area that we didn't have to venture into is identifying cash, carryover, proposed carryover for the Fredericksburg Christian design piece. So that's.
Right, but we reasonably expect to have a million dollars in carryover. I mean, we've never had less than a million dollars in carryover.
And the board could choose to ask to use that any way they want.
Right.
But we have identified 300, $430,000 of potential carryover for Ferry Farm to supplement that 400.
Right.
So that's the only difference from what I believe the board asked us to do. We didn't need to add that 500,000 for the Fredericksburg Christian. Does that make sense?
Oh, so we only need to add 430?
That's right. That's right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Because when the cost came down from 11 million to 6 million, the cost of the design was proportional to that. And so it shrunk by a certain amount.
All right. So is it the pleasure of the board to send over to the supervisors our, our priorities, which I would interpret being FY19 and FY20, or the entire CIP? We can, we can go either way. Does anybody have any strong feelings one way or the other?
Given we don't have a CIP that belongs to the school board, because we don't have a process that works anymore, I would suggest that, and this is on for information, is that right?
Well, it's on for information, but we need to get it to them before their meeting, their capital improvement approval meeting is June 5th. So even though it's on for information, we need to, to come, if we're going to get, if we want to get our input over there, it's going to have to be there before June 5th.
What is your suggestion?
Well, I, I'm willing to, it's our CIP now. It's ours. So I'm going to vote on it if we have to vote as our CIP.
Okay.
I'm still dumbfounded at the way everything just kind of unraveled six months ago. And I'm going to continue to say that until it's not unraveling anymore and we're back operational and functional. But I, but I mostly want to apologize to our parents, our taxpayers, for not having a voice in any of this at this point, because if, if this had been our CIP, we would have held public hearings on it, and we would have given them an opportunity to come in and say, hey, we want Fredericksburg Christian to be used for our preschool programs to free up space in our elementary schools. They would have had a voice, and they don't have a voice the way this whole thing unraveled. So my apologies to our parents. Hopefully next year, we won't be in this position. But I, I would fully support sending this over as our CIP.
Yes. Ms. Decatur.
I would echo that, that I would, I would prefer to vote on this as our CIP with the understanding that we're sending over it, we're sending this over as ours, and the board of supervisors, as this, at this point, still has the final say in approving the county's CIP, as I understand it. And I would also just ask that before we go into this process next year, we have some more clarification as to what happens next after this committee meets and decides together on the CIP, you know, the list, then, then when we go to vote, there, there is a breakdown, there's confusion. The, the board of supervisors still owns this document, so again, yes, I would, I would approve it as our CIP, you know, tonight, and, and send it over for their final. But, but I'd really like to see some clarification in, in the rest of this process for the next few years, if we're going to continue to do it this way.
Thank you. Any other comments, Dr. Chase?
Are we, are there just comments about whether we're voting or not, or is this?
Well, any, any comments that you have, but we, we do need to make a decision if we want to send something over, which I would urge this board to send something over so our voice will be heard, but what it'll be. So I've heard, you know, two for the, sending it over as the school board's proposed CIP.
So, so for me, I.
Or maybe we should say it, the, the school board's component of the county CIP.
Right. So, so I won't be supporting this, so I don't know if this is the time for me to explain why I won't be supporting it.
Sure.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I, I thought she was done. No, sorry.
I think she wants to explain.
Yeah. So for me, what I'm, I'm.
We just reiterate the point that Ms. Egan made, which is that we have not heard from the public. But for me, as a new board member, what I'm seeing is we approved $3 million for AG Wright and Garrisonville Elementary. We have a $36 million new elementary school opening in the north at Moncur, and now we are proposing spending 17 million on Fredericksburg Christian. That comes to a total of 56 million going to the northern end of this county, and only 10 million going to Ferry Farm Elementary or the southern end of the county. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCosker?
Sure, and I appreciate.
I was next.
Oh, go ahead.
We're going to go down the line.
Go ahead, Ms.
No, go ahead. You can go next.
I jumped out of order.
No, 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 no. Go ahead, Ms. Young. Let Ms. Young go. You, you can wait.
I'll yield.
Go.
All he's going to say is Ferry Farm.
Go.
I was kidding. So we discussed column one and two alone today, and this came over to us. I won't be voting on this whole thing because I still need clarification on the other columns. This did not come from us specifically, and I veto or second what Ms. Egan said. This is not ours. And I want to stay away from us discussing north and south. We are, we need to start talking about the whole county, all the students, all the schools as one. We need to speak in one voice. And so until then, we can be taken serious at the other end, but the board of supervisors, and they're sending us things that we have to approve. We, we didn't do this. This is not ours. So I'm not going to vote for this.
Okay. Ms. Hazer?
Sure. I'll be honest, I am somewhat conflicted, but I'm trying to, in my mind, sort out and step away from the process which is broken and look at what the, what items the school board asked. Our priority list stated all of these items, and at least they're on for a 10-year window. I do believe that the school board should be a part. I know that we can argue that, yes, the county does the bonding, but it is using VPSA bonds, there's things. I do think that the boards should be in partnership on this financial responsibility, because part of it is informing our parents and our students about what the future is. High school six coming in the fall of 2025. At one point, it was 2029. Elementary school 18, fall of 2027. That has moved up. And Hartwood, yes, I would love to be earlier, but at least I have a wastewater treatment so I can treat, you know, those kids there. Sure, I'd love it earlier, but I, I think we can, you know, work through that. Now, all of this is premised on the growth that we have, are seeing and predicting today. I have grave concerns, and I know, Mr. McCosker, whether we disagree sometimes and we don't agree. I think you'll agree with this statement. My problem is, I really, we need these dates not to slip, because then we get into the, we need it now, we need it there, and the time passes. I would really like to have voted on this as two boards together, so we show a unified commitment to what we're doing in the future. So my suggestion is that we would vote on a recommended school project, CIP, within the financial parameters set by the board of supervisors. This may not be exactly what I want, but I believe part of what we need to do is compromise within these financial limits. I see almost all the projects that we requested within a 10-year period, and at one point, they weren't even all on there in a 10-year period. So I will be supporting it, but I really would like to figure out how we are going to, as two boards, commit to this document and then not say, oh, my gosh, all of a sudden, high school six moves four years. We, we need to, to do that. So that would be my recommendation. It's not perfect, but it's, because it is a component part of the CIP, I understand. So that's, I was trying to capture that.
And if that's a motion, I'll second it.
No, no.
Everybody else has to speak.
Yeah, we're still on the information part. Ms. Decatur, you spoke before we got into all these other details. Did you have anything you want to, I just want to give you the opportunity.
No, well, I, I guess so, since you asked.
I'm trying to be fair.
Thank you.
I know it's getting late.
The only thing I wanted to add was that we had this, this kind of work session where we worked on this, and I, my, my concern is that if, if we don't come together as a, a board to approve something tonight, it will be approved in the original way that it was sent over to us by the board of supervisors without our input that we just did in, in our work session. So that's the only thing I would caution. And, and just to remind everyone that this is a working document that, that has the ability to, to change each year. Of course, we don't want to see it, you know, but, but that, that's the only thing that I would add.
Thank you. And Mr. McCosker?
Sure, yeah, just quickly, I'll support it as, as it goes forward, and, you know, knowing that, you know, before this process, Ferry Farm was on for a rebuild to the tune of 40 some odd million dollars before the new CIP process that Ms. Egan speaks about that broke down. Well, the first breakdown was pulling it off the CIP, right? But, well, yeah, I know, but, but the, so, so it went, yeah, went off the CIP and went back on the CIP. And so, you know, Moncur, that was estimated at 23 million to be equivalent with all the other renovations like Grafton Village, as Ms., Dr. Chase brought up, was, is kind of like a, the right amount to get the school up to where it should be, you know, 20 million, 18 million, 19 million. So, you know, you know, I'm bending over backwards at trying to get something for Ferry Farm, and it looks like there's something on there. There's, there's $10 million for FY19 and '20. It's not, it's not $23 million. It's not, you know, $18 million, but it's 10 million. It's, it gets us started. And so, I mean, I think that's a good thing, because there was nothing there before this whole process. It wasn't there. It was in the, it was in FY28, '29. And so at least that is something for Ferry Farm, to get it moving, and it rightly deserves to get moving.
Thank you. And I want to, I want to thank the board for the lively discussion and the give and take in the work session. I think it's really important that we work through these issues, and I think it, it really did show that we're able to compromise and come up with a plan that will meet our needs within the fiscal parameters that the county has given us. And I think this is the best, you know, we can do at this point. And as many of you have said, and the adjective that has been used over all the time I've been on the board is the CIP is a living document. It's always subject to change. So is this perfect? No. But I'm certainly willing to support this, because I think this shows the, the labor of the board, and it shows our priorities, and it will meet our immediate needs. I would ask the board to consider not changing anything in the dollars, but putting in as part of, you know, a resolution, or if we pass something, to, to make a statement that we recognize that improvements are needed to Gary Melchers, and that we will, you know, make every effort to fund them either out of cash capital or carryover funds as, you know, the, the funding is available. Because I'm not comfortable with the zero there, because we all talked about it, we recognize the need, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We can't fit that into these fiscal dollars right now. So I, I do appreciate the comments that this, this is a board document. Do we need to have everyone agree? Absolutely not. You can pass it with four, but it will not make the same statement to the board of supervisors and to the community as to what this board sees as the priorities for, for the, the next 10 years. This isn't what we wanted. You can go back and look at our priorities. We wanted it earlier, but we were told, and I accept, it's not affordable. So we've made it affordable. We may change this. Another board may change this in the future, but we're looking at something today. And I would ask you to consider if in your heart, your soul, whatever, you can support this, to support it, so we can send a message to the supervisors that this is what we want. And particularly, what I'm focusing on is the, the Fredericksburg Christian School, the addition and Ferry Farms, because this is very different from what was given to us. The dollars are the same, but it's a significant difference. from what was given to us. The dollars are the same, but it's a significant difference, and the difference is what happens to Ferry Farms and not waiting 10 years to have something done. So.
Madam Chair, may I ask what language you're going to put here, so I could perhaps change my mind?
Yes. What, well, what, those who don't feel you can support it, is there something you could support if we changed the title? I mean, would that help? Because we're not, we are not approving a capital improvement plan.
I will support it if I get some, something here. Some, I will support it if I get something, some language for Gary Melchers. Like, it's zero. I.
Well, but it, but we can, if, if we can add that in, that the board, you know, the board has not included any funding in this plan for Melchers because of the fiscal demands of the other projects, but it is our desire and intention to make the improvements as originally proposed, you know, in the foreseeable future as the funding becomes available.
Okay. Then I'm in.
I, I just have a problem with, I.
And if you can't, I understand.
Good.
I'm just, I'm just asking you to consider it. So, and, and this, as long as I've been here, you know, we, there has been north, south, and this is really not about the north and the south. This is where the schools ended up. And, and I can tell you, ironically, Ferry Farms was last on the list because 10 years ago, the Ferry Farms community came to this board and said, we do not want a rebuild. We like our school. We don't want it any bigger. You know, you can renovate it, but don't make it any bigger. And the board at that time said, sorry, we're going to build you a new school. So then they, they didn't mind at all going at the end of the line.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
I agree.
It was going to be two stories, 950.
I wasn't here, but I agree.
But, but that's what happened. So that's how Ferry Farm got at the end. It wasn't a north, south. It was, they were willing to put it off. Well, we're not going to put it off. So it's, it's really, it wasn't, it just ended up that way. It wasn't, you know, north versus south.
Ms. Healy?
I'm willing to try and make a motion, if you would like for me to try. I'd like to make a motion that the school board.
Well, first, you have to move this to action.
Oh, sorry. You're right. Motion to move, I don't know the number of this. 10.05. To action.
Okay. 10.05. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Decatur. Motion by Ms. Hazard. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. Now, do we have a motion? Motion carried unanimously, Ms. Hall.
Heard those ayes.
I'd like to make a, a motion that the school board approve the recommended school project, CIP, within the financial parameters set by the Board of Supervisors as set forth in the attachment to 10.05, with the additional language related to funding of improvements at Gary Melchers in the coming years through funds.
Cash capital.
Cash capital.
Or carryover funds as they become available. Does that work?
Yes, that would be, that would work.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. Second. Just one question to clarify. Would you say the improvements that we had originally proposed to Melchers, just so it's clear what improvements we're talking about? I think it was 3.4 million.
Yes.
You know, I don't want any, you know, some of those, it's clear that we're talking about the improvements that we had identified before with.
Been noted.
That, okay.
Been noted and.
I accept that.
All right. Any discussion? No? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Nay.
Ms. Decatur?
Yes.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McOscar?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes six to.
All right. And thank you, thank you all for all the work and, and the pain and suffering that went into this, but hopefully we'll be successful.
Perhaps we could make the name of that document, how the motion was carried, that this title could be changed to that.
Oh, yes, of course.
I think that would be the word.
And, and the word constraints, I like that better than parameters, but, but that's just.
Can you just, just track, track, track the motion that Ms. Hazard made for, for that language?
Yeah.
If you can just, when you're, when you're typing that up, just track that language.
It is constraints.
All right. Now, we need to get that over to the supervisors and any objection to having Dr. Benson send that to Mr. Foley. And tomorrow, when Mr. McOscar and I have our meeting with the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors, we will share it with them as well.
Close session.
Okay? All right. Well, that brings us to the next school board meeting, June 12th at 7:00 PM. However, we just talked about a work session at 5:30. Oh, actually, it won't be a work session. It'll be a special call meeting, because we'll have to go in closed session to discuss the personnel issues with, with their consultant for the superintendent search. Do we have a motion for closed session?
Yep. I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting pursuant to personnel exemption at section 2.237A1 Code of Virginia to discuss and consider a personnel matter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're here. Now in closed session.